Madam Speaker, good morning colleagues. I'm Ina Trantay Shetin, Elie Hesley Turangoahan is back from recess. We are continuing on the second reading folder, but it looks like we do not have quorum at this time, but I'd like to recognize the presence of the Vice Speaker, Senator San Augustine, and Senator Luhan Sidusmasi. Senators, we will wait until we have a quorum. Recession. Again, we're back on second reading. We left off on Bill 179-37. And Senator Taitikui, you had the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, we are waiting for the -- some documentation that the good author of this legislation said that he would get, and one of them was the resolution, legitimate resolution, from the Chamor Land Trust, as well as an appraisal if it was done. I believe that's what we were waiting for. So, thank you, Madam Speaker.
With the sponsor you.
Madam Speaker, on the question of the appraisal, the response I received is that the appraisal was done in 1989 when the lease first started. And on the bill, it requires that if the bill is enacted, then they do another appraisal. Then they'll determine the total amount they'll be required to spend or to pay. And that's where they'll move forward. And that was based on the bill and understanding that the bill, many of the amendments, was based on the resolution that they passed. And then on the resolution, I think that the -- the senator from -- my colleague asked that question about the resolution. What was that question again? If you can repeat that, please.
Is there a legitimate resolution? Because during the public hearing, a resolution was proffered, but they rescinded that resolution and took it back. And, you know, point of information too, Madam Speaker, is I did have a conversation with a staff member who did get a hold of a member of the Chamor Land Trust. And they do not have a resolution at this time. They rescinded a resolution that they had proffered first, and at this point, they don't have a resolution. It will take time to follow the triple -- to follow the open government law on the five-day notice, and no appraisal, correct, to the answer of the appraisal. No appraisal was done for this new deal that was done. So, that was my question, was there, for some reason, maybe he should know more than I, that there might be a resolution from Chamor Land Trust supporting this.
Yes. Madam Speaker, based on the minutes, the unofficial minutes of the Chamor Land Trust, that they brought up the issue that, yes, they did withdraw the resolution, but they identified, and they made a motion, was made in support of the bill, in reference to the bill, that once the one -- the resolution first started was 173. Then they had to update it and correct it, and they made the motion at that hearing, at their hearing. The resolution is a technical error to reflect 179, which they knew that was the bill. They made that correction. And unfortunately, we don't have a copy of -- they haven't yet met to officially adopt that meeting. That's the only thing I'm waiting for, but otherwise...
Okay, you can address the podiums, these guys.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
I will acknowledge your point of information. Good morning, Speaker. You are acknowledged.
Sidusmasi, yes, those information are correct about the 1989 was the last time an appraisal has been done. The bill also does not require an appraisal. The way it's written on page three, subsection four, it only says that the net present value will be determined by an appraiser, but the net present value, based on subsection three, which is that 12% escalation or 10% escalation every year, not that a new appraisal will be done. Only, they're using this company to determine the net present value between seven and nine million dollars. It's very limited.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Speaker, for the point of information.
Madam Speaker.
Do you want to add, based on the question? You may proceed, Senator San Augustine.
Yes, Madam Speaker, in reference to the appraisal, if they want to amend the bill to reflect that they do an appraisal, so they can get something more accurate, I am in objection to that. But the bill allows that, and it shows the escalation rate of rental and so forth. But we need to not be confused that the amount that they keep claiming, because the impact of the bill is not only the rental they're going to be paying to CLTC, but the savings of CLTC, of the occupancy of the building, which will save them. And that was part of my opening, is that they would save as much as $800,000 a year in rental, which totals to about 26 million, all the way to the end of that lease. And then at the same token, I also address that there's a savings of approximately about 25 million per year for the people of Guam. So, it's not just the rental money they're going to receive, but it's also the savings they will obtain from the people of Guam and the savings on the power.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Tello Ystou have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author of the legislation for answering some of those questions. And I did have another question with regards to, is there any -- we're in, now that we know that there's no appraisal required, and hopefully somebody will proffer an amendment to incorporate that, but is there anything in this legislation in the event that the GICC company is not able to provide, or not able to receive the contract from GPA? As you know, Madam Speaker, it was in the newspaper a couple of years back, or, probably a year back, regarding the Menilao Solar Farm, a few years back, actually. And a contract was between the company and GPA, and something had gone a row where the power company said that, you know, we won't be able to finish this project because it's costing more, et cetera. So, GPA had to turn around and renegotiate the contract, actually, and cause it to be more expensive for GPA, which, you know, everyone's anticipating lower their prices, that, you know, this money, this additional funding, had to come from somewhere. And I'm sure it didn't come from their rainy day fund, but it came from the ratepayers. So, is there anything in the contract, or this agreement, or legislation, that requires some kind of comfort for the government of Guam in the event that they do not get the contract from GPA? And, Madam Speaker, that there's a sunset provision stating that if they don't get it by a certain amount of time, then it is reverted back to the Chamor Land Trust?
Thank you, Senator Taitikui. Senator San Augustine, would you like to yield?
Yes, I'd like to yield. Madam Speaker, on the page six of the bill, you find on number 13, line 25, "In the event the property is not used for the generation, storage, and transmission of renewable solar power, the provisions of section two of the Act shall be null and void." So, that means if they don't do it, it goes back to golf course. Now, at the same token, there's a catch 22, because if they can't generate business, on the last page, on section five, the effective date, "All provision of this Act shall become null and void should the GICC fail to settle their arrears payment within 30 calendar days." So, there's a lot of catch to this. If the bill passes, they've got to pay their arrears. That's one. Number two, if they don't get the contract from GPA, and they can't do the solar farm, and it's on page six, then the Act is null and void. It goes back. It goes back to them. Nobody gets anything.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Senator Tello, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And another question to the author. And, you know, I do apologize for all these questions. I'm notorious for asking questions, but even more so now, because without a community report, it makes it difficult to revert back. But, you know, there is still the issue of Guam International Country Club owing funding to Chamor Land Trust. There's still that situation there. So, is there any way that they -- is there anything in the legislation, to the author again, anything in the legislation protecting the fact that, number one, they are obligated, they are required to pay that, whether they get this lease or not, or whether this bill passes or not, that they have to pay what they owe and continue to pay on the lease, because they have about 14 more years to go on this particular lease?
I will ask Senator San Augustine.
Madam Speaker, in reference to them paying it, they're on a payment plan with them. I think the question would be not if they're willing to pay. They're going to pay, and they're paying, and they've been paying down their arrears. That's their focus. If the bill passes, they've got to catch up real quick. So, that's the catch on that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Senator Tello, you still have the floor.
The point of information, Madam Speaker. The bill has no language mandating that arrears be caught up with. And it was one of the things that was discussed in the Chamor Land Trust Commission, is that they wanted that to be a prerequisite, that at the very minimum, arrears were going to be caught up with. They are still, to my understanding, at least half a million dollars in arrears. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, in reference to that statement, in the bill, if the bill passes, they have to pay their arrears upfront, everything within 30 days. So...
to pay, then that's where they will move forward. And that was based on, on the bill and understanding that the bill, uh, many of the amendment was based on the resolution that they passed. And then on the resolution, I, I think that the, the senator from, uh, my colleague asked that question, um, about the, about the resolution. What was that question again? If you can repeat that, please?
Is there a legitimate resolution? Because during the public hearing, a resolution was proffered, but they, they rescinded that resolution and took it back. And, um, you know, point of information too, Madam Speaker is I did have a conversation with a staff member who did get a hold of a member of the Chamorah Land Trust. And they do not have a resolution at this time. They rescinded a resolution that they had proffered first. And at this point, they don't have a resolution. It will take time to follow the triple, uh, to follow the, uh, open government law, um, on the five day notice and no appraisal, correct, uh, to the, uh, to the answer of the appraisal. No appraisal was done for this new deal that was done. So that was my question was, was there, uh, for some reason, maybe he should know more than I that there might be a resolution from Chamorah Land Trust supporting this?
Yes. Uh, Madam Speaker, um, based on the, um, minutes, the unofficial minutes of the Chamorah Land Trust, that they, they brought up the issue that yes, they did withdraw the resolution, but they identified and they made a motion, it was made in support of the bill in reference to the bill that, um, once, the one, if the resolution first started with 173, then they had to update it and correct it. And they made the motion, uh, at that hearing, at their, at their hearing, the resolution is a technical error to reflect 179, which they knew that was the bill. They made that correction. And unfortunately, we don't have a copy of, they, they haven't yet met to officially adopt that meeting.
Okay.
That's the only thing I'm waiting for, but otherwise.
You can, you can address the, uh, the podiums, these guys.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Point of information, Madam.
I will acknowledge your point of information. Good morning, Speaker.
Yes, those, those information are correct about the 1989 was the last time an appraisal has been done. The bill also does not require an appraisal. The way it's written on page three, subsection four, it only says that the net present value will be determined by an appraiser, but the net present value based on subsection three, which is that 12% escalation or 10% escalation every year, not, not that a new appraisal will be done, only they're using this company to determine the net present value between seven and nine million dollars. It's very limited.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Speaker, for the point of information.
Ma- Madam Speaker.
Do you want to add, uh, based on the question? You may proceed, Senator San Agustin.
Yes, Madam Speaker, in reference to the appraisal, if they want to amend the bill to reflect that they do an appraisal so they can get something more accurate, I am not objection to that. But the bill allows that and it shows the escalation rate of rental and so forth. But we need to not, not be confused that the amount that they keep claiming, because the impact of the bill is not only the, is not only the rental they're going to be paying to CLTC, but the savings of CLTC, of the, of the occupancy of the building, which will save them. And I, and that was part of my opening, is that they would save as much as $800,000 a year in, in, uh, in rental, which accumu- which totals to about 26 million all the way to the end of that lease. And then at the same token, I also address that we're, there's a savings of about approximately about 25 million per year for the people of Guam. So it's not just the rental money they're going to receive, but it's also the savings they will obtain at, from the people of Guam and the savings on the power.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Tello, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and, uh, thank you to the author of the legislation for answering some of those questions. And, um, I, I did have another question with regards to, is there any, we're in, now that we know that there's no appraisal required and hopefully somebody will proffer an amendment to incorporate that, um, but is there anything in the, uh, this legislation in the event that the GICC, um, company is not able to provide, um, or, or not able to receive the contract from GPA? As you know, Madam Speaker, in, it was in the, uh, newspaper a couple of years back or, probably a year back regarding the, um, the Menilal Solar Farm, a few years back, actually. And a contract was between the company and, and GPA and something had gone a row where the, the power company said that, you know, we, we won't be able to finish this, um, project because it's costing more, et cetera. So GPA had to turn around and renegotiate the contract, um, actually in, in cause it to be more expensive for GPA, which, you know, everyone's anticipating lower their prices, that, you know, this money, this additional funding had to come from somewhere. And I'm sure it didn't come from their rainy day fund, but it came from the, the ratepayers. So is there anything in the contract or this agreement or legislation that requires, um, some kind of comfort for the government of Guam in the event that they do not get the contract from GPA? And Madam Speaker, that there's a sunset provision stating that if they don't get it by a certain amount of time, then it is reverted back to the Chamorah Land Trust?
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator San Agustin?
Yes.
Would you like to yield?
Yes, I'd like to yield. Madam Speaker, on the page six of the bill, you find on number 13, line 25, "In the event the property is not used for the generation, storage, and transmission of renewable solar power, the provisions of section two of the Act shall be null and void." So that means if they don't do it, it goes back to a golf course. Now, at the same token, there's a catch 22, because if they can't generate business. On the last, on the last page, on section si- five, the effective date, "All provision of this Act shall become null and void should the GICC fail to settle their arrears payment within 30 calendar days." So there's a lot of catch to this. If the bill passes, they got to pay their arrears. That's one. Number two, if they don't get the contract from GPA and they can't do the, uh, the solar farm, and it's on page six, then the Act is null and void. It goes back, it's, goes back to them. Nobody gets anything.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Tello, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, and another question, uh, to the author. And you know, I, I do apologize for all these questions. I'm notorious for asking questions, but even more so now because without a community report, it makes it difficult, uh, to revert back. But, you know, there, there is still the issue of, um, Guam International Country Club owing funding to Chamorah Land Trust. There's still that situation there. So is there any way that they, um, is there anything in the legislation, to the author again, anything in the legislation protecting the fact that number one, they are obligate, they are required to pay that whether they get this lease or not, or whether they, this bill passes or not, that they have to pay what they owe and continue to pay on the lease because they have about 14 more years to go on this particular lease?
I will ask Senator San Agustin.
Madam Speaker, in reference to them paying it, they're on a payment plan with them. I think the question would be not if they're willing to pay, they're going to pay and they're paying and they've been paying down their arrears. That's their focus. If the bill passes, they got to catch up real quick. So that's, that's the catch on that one.
Again.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Tidaway, you still have the floor. One moment, please. Speaker Terlayi, on a point of information, I will acknowledge.
Sisus Massey, I appreciate that. The, um, the bill has no language mandating that arrears be caught up with. And it was one of the things that was discussed in the Chamorah Land Trust Commission is that they wanted that to be a prerequisite that at the very minimum, arrears were going to be caught up with. There still, to my understanding, at least half a million dollars in arrears. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, in reference to that statement, in the bill, if the bill passes, they have to pay their arrears upfront, everything within 30 days. So there's a payment plan. Let's not, let's not forget that. It's like anybody else that's in a payment plan, like when you have a loan, you pay what you can. And when you start to get close to default and you talk to the bank, they'll adjust and, and work with you. So I don't, I don't know what the real issue is here.
On that note, a moment's recess. Ymina Trenatchevich and Leslie Turin Guam is back from recess. Senator Joe San Agustin, on the inquiry, you are acknowledged still.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, when we, then when, when the question was asked about the payment plan, that's providing your drive. The payment plan does exist. And the payment plan also was, I stated that the reason the GICC was impacting its revenue was due to the COVID-19, because they had to shut down during the pandemic. Only businesses authorized to open are grocery stores, construction company, and gas stations. All other businesses were shut down by executive order due to pandemic. When Congress authorized the American Recovery Plan, all companies in Guam qualified, but foreign, own co- foreign owned company did not qualify like FSM citizens, who are not US citizens, don't qualify for FEMA assistance. GICC was one of them. Thus why in good faith, GICC requested a payment reduction, but was denied by the CLTC. But was approved, was a payment plan to pay arrears by 2026. To date, GICC has been good, has been good terms in the arrangement. So if, if you look at the, what's, you all have it in your drive. You have exactly what the payment plan is and is what CLTC agreed. They continue their monthly payment, continue paying on their arrears and pay it by 2026. Folks, it's already at the end of 2024. 2026 will come up faster than you think. And with that, Madam Speaker, I, I think I've answered and justified in sufficiently on, on those questions.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Tello, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, to, to the author for answering that question and, and providing us this, um, agreement between Chamorah Land Trust and, um, the municipal golf course, Guam International Company Club, GICC. However, um, is there anything in the legislation here that was said that in the event this bill should pass, that those arrears of over almost a half a million dollars will be paid in full?
Senator San Agustin, do you yield to the question?
Number one, there's a payment plan. Number two, if you look at the, the substitute bill, the bill itself, the very end, if GIC already has a payment plan, but on the bill, if they fail to pay, within 30 days upon the passage of this Act, the issue is null and void. Everything is dead as far as anything to do with solar farm goes, it's up to now CLTC. If they don't want to pay, out the door you go, GICC. That's simple, like what they should have done for many other commercial leases they have and the lack of some of the leases out there.
Point of information. Please state your point of information.
Yes, the question was very clear. Does the bill require that payment of arrears be made? And the answer is no, the bill does not require. There's no section in this bill that requires that. Number two, the Chamorah Land Trust, in their discussions, as the author talked about their discussions during a meeting, were very clear that if they are going to support any deal, they want settlement of all arrears within 30 calendar days. Despite the payment plan or any other previous arrangement, this is a new deal and that's what they had asked for.
Thank you, Speaker.
Madam Speaker, in reference to that, I read the last page of the bill. "All provision of this Act shall become null and void should the GICC fail to settle arrears payment within 30 days." I mean, how much more do you need? They're going to settle it. If the bill passes, they'll settle it within 30 days. Otherwise, even though the bill passes, if they don't settle in 30 days, this bill goes right outside the door. Null and void, and it says that on the bill.
Thank you. Does that satisfy the question, Senator Tidaway? He's referring to the last page of the bill, page six.
Madam Speaker, you know, I think, uh, just one minute recess because the, the copy I have here is, is different. That was, if I have this one second.
We'll take a moment to recess and make sure everyone has a copy. We're back from recess. Senator Tello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. Just to clarify, because I was told it was page six and I didn't see it anywhere. It's actually on page seven of the, of the substituted, uh, bill. And the reason why I bring this up is because during the public hearing, they kept mentioning that if this bill should get be, get through, that they will pay their arrears within 30 days or within, right away, um, if it should happen. So I just want to make sure that regardless if they get the contract or not, and this bill does go through, that that arrears need to be paid. I mean, this is a whole different, and I, and I really believe that we should incorporate whatever agreement that the Chamorah Land Trust has into this, into this bill, this legislation, make it by law. I mean, if you even read the agreement on, on the arrears, paying the arrears, it, gosh, it, there's so many flaws in this. And then you turn it around and you have this signature called certificate of payment, Guam International Country Club, you know, to Chamorah Land Trust totaling 827,542. I just think if you're going to change a whole agreement from the Chamorah Land Trust from a golf course, a municipal golf course, this is a golf course, not like a private golf course. This is almost a community government golf course, used on government land to provide a very low rental amount, because in exchange, they had to lower the amount of fees charged to our local golfers and our junior golfers, a smaller amount. That was the whole purpose of having a municipal golf course. Guam is notorious to have these, uh, notorious for having beautiful golf courses here, but unfortunately, all of them are private and they cost substantially, a substantial amount of fees to be able, green fees to play. to be able, green fees, to play on these courses. That's why this golf course was put into place, to allow the community opportunity to play golf at a lower rate. I mean, you know, sometimes when tourists come here, they pay like almost $100, $120 for green fees. That's just one game, one round of golf. And the whole purpose of taking government of Guam land was to utilize this for our community, our own local people, to be able to afford to play this sport. And then we go and change it for something totally different to make additional funding, which is only, what, $480 extra a month? I can imagine how much money you can make on these solar farms. I'm hearing it's millions of dollars a month. Millions a month. So I just, I think that an appraisal needs to be done for the value of this property because we're shortchanging the people of Guam here. This is a sweetheart deal. It is. We're in the middle of a contract for one company who failed to make their payment. And then in exchange, they'll pay $480 extra a month, but oh, yes, we will give you $9 million. I think that's about $9 million. After we get everything all up and prepped and ready to go and we start servicing out that night, but that $9 million is owed to Chamor Land Trust in the longevity of the contract, which is 31 years now. They've added addition from on top of their 14 more years to go, and then they added more on there to make it 31 years. But that $9 million is not like a bonus. That $9 million is accumulation of rent. So, you know, that's just a crafty way of business propositions that people put on paper to make it look good. But you need to read through the fine line here. I truly believe in transparency and accountability. And being fiscally responsible is something that's always forgotten in this body sometimes. Being fiscally responsible. The Chamor Land Trust, granted, they've made deals that shortchanged the people of Guam. And every once in a while, we come in and saying, wait, stop. Get an appraisal, find out the cost for this, the true value of this property for the Chamor Land Trust. So there are a lot of inclusions that is needed in this legislation that would give more comfort to us, a lot more comfort to all of us. But I think it's a responsibility of us to do that for the people of Guam. Because we open that door and allow them to come in here. I'll tell you one thing, they'll be making all kinds of changes to this legislation to make sure they get the best bang for their buck. And that's the taxes they pay every time they get their check and taxes are taken out from their check. It goes somewhere. And this body has that responsibility to make sure that their good, hard-earned money is spent right. And that we are being very transparent about this. Cross our Ts, dot our Is, that's what we're trying to do here, that's all. This is not pegging one senator against another. This is about good legislation that protects our people. And just remember, if this bill goes through, then it's once upon a time, Guam had a municipal golf course that made it affordable for our people to play golf on this island instead of our children up against a fence looking in to all these tourists coming out here and playing golf and wishing they can play too. Well, we had that once upon a time. We had that ability. And now this bill would take it away. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to comment.
A point of information.
Point of information.
State your point of information, Senator Augustine.
You know, Madam Speaker, as we talk about, oh, only this little we're going to save, we seem to forget what I brought up on the opening. Chamor Land Trust, Guam Ancestral Lands, the Department of Land Management will save and rent money. We, the body, do not have to appropriate funds for them to rent because why? They'll have a building on currently the GICC property. $800,000 a year in the term of this lease. The Governor of Guam will have saved $26 million because it is going to cost them over $10 million. And then on top of that, separate out what CLTC will be receiving. There's an estimate, the purchase of $30 million gallons of fuel annually, saving over $25 million a year. We, the body, keeps passing the $100 a month. Reduction in payment, the par rebate. This can force GPA now to lower the rates because why? The solar farm is in place. Hopefully, the solar farm is placed. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Augustine.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of information, Senator Titegui.
The point is, this has nothing to do about a building. This has everything, and what I meant, everything to do with the affordability for our own people of Guam to be able to play this sport. Thank you.
On the bill, Speaker Trelawney followed by Senator Siniklas.
Sisus Massey. I'd like to stand to speak on this bill. And the question that the bill offers to us is, you know, do we want the Chamor Land Trust Commission to get this deal for $9 million upfront of rent for the next 31 years? And do I want the Chamor Land Trust to get $9 million? Yes, of course, I want them to get as much money as they can to put in infrastructure. So I have no objection to putting in infrastructure and getting money to do that. But actually, I would like them to get more. And do I believe this bill is the way for them to get more? Absolutely not. I don't think it's a good deal for the Chamor Land Trust Commission nor the people of Guam. As the sponsor said, the last appraisal on this property was done in 1989. And it's that same value with 10% every five-year raises that we are using today, that is proposed to be used in the lease, with a mere change from 10% to 12% increases every five years based on a 1989 appraisal. And I think this is very important. There was an audit done in 2016 on this particular lease of the Chamor Land Trust. And this audit, I want all the people of Guam to be reminded about. Because what happened back then, we are, I believe, at very great risk of repeating. The audit says that the initial 25-year lease agreement was executed in 1989 pursuant to public law. And it was signed by all the necessary parties, including the governor, approved by the legislature. It went through everything it was supposed to. But the second agreement in 2014 was not. When the 1989 lease expired, the Chamor Land Trust Commission leased the 829,000 square meters of golf course property to Company B despite Company B's noncompliance with the lease agreement and without legislative authorization, without the governor's, lieutenant governor's, or attorney general's signatures, without the required two land appraisals. And the audit cites that there may have been lost opportunities to raise rental revenue for the 2014 lease term. They said CLT did not diligently monitor and enforce the lease provisions and the public law to protect CLTC's interest in the property. Company A assigned its lease interest to Companies B and C through a series of name changes without governor or legislature's approvals. Company B was grossly delinquent in rental and property tax payments corroborated by Company B's unaudited fiscal year financial data indicating severe financial distress. Company B did not submit required annual reports and financial statements. Despite the noncompliance, a second lease with Company B was executed only by CLTC's acting chairman, acting director, and Company B's general manager. About the missed opportunity to raise rental rates, the audit says property appraisals were not obtained for the 2014 lease agreement and resumed based on the 1989 lease agreement. Exactly what this bill proposes that we do. As a result, CLTC may have lost opportunities to raise rental revenue over the term of the 2014 lease. That 2014 lease continues to today. As an example, and this was done again in 2016, the Department of Revenue and Tax 2014 Real Property Tax Assessment Rule assessed the property at $6.5 million and appreciation of $5.1 million from the initial lease's appraisal of $1.4 million. And then they talk about the poor financial performance of the company. This audit was sent to the Attorney General at that time. And, you know, as one of my colleagues said previously, this is unfortunately the history of the Chamor Land Trust in so many occasions. It's got a splendid history of trying to write justice, empowerment, housing opportunities, yet it has this horrible business track record for getting value for their land in these commercial leases. And I hate to say it, but with the help of senators in previous legislatures and this one, not necessarily empowering them to get their maximum value that they can, that they should, that they owe their beneficiaries in their fiduciary roles. This project did not go out for a bid. It did not go through the normal commercial lease process for all Chamor Land Trust commercial leases. And the number one criteria for a commercial lease was determined that this property is not necessary for those 8,000 people waiting on the residential leases. Number two, they did not announce or solicit competition for this property or any property in its inventory for a solar farm. So yes, when they say this is a sweetheart deal, it is a sole source, you offer, I'm going to give it to you kind of deal. We have no idea what we could get from anyone else. That's what we're dealing with. There's no projection of potential revenue of what they're going to actually make converting this from a golf course to a solar farm. That's not included in how we're going to calculate the value of the property. And use is very important to the value of a property. The government, before the Chamor Land Trust was implemented, before they actually transferred the lands to the Chamor Land Trust, the government of Guam said they wanted this recreational facility. They passed a law making this government of Guam land a golf course. But when it transferred to the Chamor Land Trust, they were mandated to do things differently. That if they're no longer going to use it for recreational purposes and they want to use it for commercial purposes, then we need to deal on a commercial basis. Again, we're dealing with a 1989 fair market value. 1989. We know the contracts that are currently being let out by GPA for solar farms, their annual incomes, $17, $19 million. One year. We're going to bind ourselves and the Chamor Land Trust to a 31-year more lease with a company who has been delinquent in their payments to the Chamor Land Trust for 31 more years on the promise that they're going to pay maximum of $9 million, which is their rent upfront, which is their current rent. Not their new solar farm rent, it's their current rent, escalated by 12% every five years if and when they begin the generation of power. And they don't get paid that $9 million according to the deal in this bill until generation of power is actually received by GPA. So there's some provision in here that says, you know, we might need to extend this lease term by additional two years in the event it's necessary for regulatory requirements, construction schedules, requirements of GPA. I don't expect this to be done within two years. And the notion that we're going to get our clubhouse to use for an office building, yes, you're going to save some lease amounts paying wherever you're leasing your office right now, CLTC, but you own that clubhouse. If they're in default of this lease and you terminate the lease based on default, it's yours. There's no need to commit 31 more years of this property, of use of this property for less than best value. When the time we heard the hearing on this bill, we were looking at ways to get $9 million to Chamor Land Trust Commission because we wanted them to use it to partner with USDA, SUDA program, or in any other way to bring infrastructure. SUDA program, or in any other way to bring infrastructure to parcels of land. Bringing in the infrastructure, particularly sewer, would allow them to divide it smaller and allow Chamor Land Trust to put more leases on that property. And when they first heard of this deal, I'm sure Chamor Land Trust was desperate. They had no other income. The cable income is not coming in yet. But they should not be desperate anymore because with the help of my colleagues, we have given them $9 million seed money to start these USDA projects, which were proposed to be a revolving type of fund that they would be able to replenish and use going And if we really just want them to get maximum money, then I say let them designate commercial land and get maximum money. There's nothing preventing them from doing that. This bill is very clear. It's mandate, mandate, mandate. They are going to do this. They don't have flexibility in how they're going to negotiate it. This is the deal. So I'm proposing some amendments. I think they've been passed out. The first one is to delete from the bill's intent the reference to a unanimous resolution. They've made it very clear in their testimony on this bill. They retract it, this resolution, and their testimony said they will not be submitting testimony in support of this bill. No testimony. So I'm proposing to delete that paragraph, page 2, lines 12 to 8, 18.
On the amendment, there's been an objection. Anyone wishing to speak?
I think our bills should state the truth. And if we're going to state things in the intent that are not true, what are we doing?
Madam Speaker, can I speak on my objection?
Okay, let's let the author of the amendment finish her introduction, and then we will begin discussion.
It says they've passed a unanimous resolution. That's what this paragraph says. I'm just motioning to strike it because there is no resolution, and they made that very clear by their testimony. So to Ms. Lee, the people of Guam, in future years that this was done is wrong. So it's a very simple amendment. State the truth. Take it out. You don't need it.
On the amendment, Senator San Agustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I was very clear when I brought up the issue about the resolution. They got the minutes. I like that when they say state the truth. Very clear on their meeting. They just haven't had a meeting to adopt it and approve it. But, you know, they stated that the only problem they had was their, on that first resolution, was 173. Need to change to 179. I provided a copy of 179. It's still there. That's the base of my objection. And it was all about their support for Bill 179. So that, I maintain my objection.
On the amendment, Senator Titegui, followed by Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, it's beginning to sound like he said, she said, you know, and it's very difficult for us to base, you know, any kind of decision we make or vote we make on something unless we get it from the horse's mouth. Now, obviously, there's not one person here that sits on the Chamor Land Trust right now to tell us whether they are going to put a resolution, whether they are going to stipulate any requirements in there, whether they even want this, whether they're going to put a stipulation to require an appraisal. Nothing in there says that. This amendment here is very simple. It's allowing the Chamor Land Trust to speak for themselves, basically. So, you know, I mean, the previous speaker said that they said this, they said that, but, you know, I spoke to a staff this morning who spoke to somebody from Chamor Land Trust. And they're still up in the air about this. I mean, let alone an appraisal that's needed. So I think it's, I think this amendment is being very truthful and allowing Chamor Land Trust to make that decision, you know, not for us to put words in their mouth. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this amendment. You know, we've had interesting pieces of legislation on the floor, but I have to tell you, this one's right up there. I think we need to represent what is actually happening. I mean, if the commission is going to get together and formally pass a new resolution, they're certainly welcome to do so. But that's not where we're at at this juncture. And I'm sure every effort's going to be made to put forth to the people of Guam that this is a good deal, and that factual statements are being made on this floor, and that it's all good, and we should just move on. But the reality is, that's not the case. There's been a lot of misrepresentations made with regards to this bill so far since we've started deliberation a couple days ago. And here we are today. Is it factual that the commission has indeed passed a current resolution that we can reference in this bill? Especially when the commission has said that the previous resolution was an error and they were pulling it back. If that's the case, then we should represent it as it is because, of course, the presentation, Madam Speaker, has been made, that everybody's all good. All the other golf courses are all good with this. Of course they would be. I mean, it's less competition for them. But then again, these other golf courses on Guam are all changing hands and all changing ownership. So what representation is made today by current owner or representative of that owner really doesn't mean much of anything when the new company takes over. But we don't talk about that, do we? And, oh, the whole golfing association on Guam is all good with this too. Really? I don't golf, but I know golfers. That's not the comments I've been hearing in the last few days. So, you know, when we have our own little sweetheart here, like we have in this sweetheart deal in this bill that's before us, and we want to show the people of Guam, because I'll tell you, I'm not talking to my colleagues anymore, Madam Speaker. When you sell yourself down the river, sometimes it's very hard to come back. Because all of these guys know what the right thing to do is, but are they going to do the right thing? That's up to you, people of Guam, to decide in, what, less than 30-plus days, what the right thing is, whether or not your senators here represent the right thing for you. Because we can sugarcoat all this and make it look and sound good, but is that the reality of where we're at? And yes, those of us that are not in support of this bill, because we know the factual issues that are involved, and we know who's going to get the short end of the stick. It's going to be the land trust recipients. Just the representations that have been made by the speaker who's sponsored this amendment, my goodness, 1989, what were we all doing in 1989? I think I just started working for the government of Guam, for the Adabla's administration in 19, January of 1989. That was a long, 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 long time ago. But that's what we're referencing. That's what we're determining value on. That's what we're going to determine what the lease payments are that are so minor and miniscule. Few extra hundred bucks a month. Wow, we're going out of our way, aren't we? But we're willing to sell out our people. We're willing to sell out the land trust recipients for a few extra hundred bucks a month. So you know what? Let's call it for what it is. And unless the sponsor of this particular bill can provide us a current resolution that actually states the intention, it's signed, sealed, and delivered by the Land Trust Commission, that this is the action that they're taking, I think it's a misrepresentation to put it in this bill that that is the case. Why is that such a concern? If it's not factual, then it should be removed. And if you want to allow it, dear people of Guam, if your senators here want to allow it, then you decide. Because there are no rose-colored glasses in here for me on this issue. I think in this case, our people are being sold down the river for, what, $9 million? Oh, my goodness. $9 million over the next 30-plus years, where most of us that are in this session hall won't even be alive. But we're willing to do that, aren't we? We're willing to meddle in the interests of the land trust and the commission that's so excited to get an office space that they're willing to go into this agreement. As the previous speaker mentioned, our speaker with regards to the deadbeat payments, not just this company, the company before them that got the lease on this property. They've consistently been consistent about not consistently paying the money to the Chamor Land Trust. What is the thing the commission should have done, Madam Speaker? The commission should have canceled this lease. That's certainly what I would have done. We should have canceled this lease. Because you're not just 30 days, 90 days, 100 days, you're talking years behind. And even the language that's in this bill is really intended that, oh, they don't pay their full share until they get certain things that they want. Oh, when we get the agreement, we're going to do this. When we get the agreement with GPA, we're going to pay this. Why are we paving the road? What's the deal here? If this agreement had been canceled, if it went out for bid, we wouldn't even be here. Why are we getting involved? Just like the race weight park, all of a sudden, we got to meddle our fingers, our sticky little fingers, in this issue. But when we want to put into legislation information that is not factual, and like I said, unless the sponsor can deliver that resolution, signed, sealed, and delivered by the commission, it's a misrepresentation. It's not truthful. Actually, in simple words, it's a lie. It's simply a lie. I think we should be making every effort, because we talk about it with such ease, about accountability in government, transparency in government. We need to shine the light so that we make sure that those not-so-reputable people go in and abuse the people's money or the people's resources. In this particular case, the people's land. Because they'll make millions off this property. What they're offering the Chamor Land Trust, and what they're offering the recipients is scraps, with the promise that, oh, we're going to give you infrastructure. Let's cut this deal because we're going to get you water and sewer. That's what we're telling these people, isn't it, Mr. Chairman, the sponsor of this bill? They didn't tell us yet that they mailed out to probably how many Chamor Land Trust recipients last week? A flyer? Where is that? Let me pull it up, because I had a Chamor Land Trust recipient send this to me. I think we should read it. Buenos. We are working with the Chamor Land Trust Commission and answering your call to run infrastructure to CLTC properties. Whether you are leasing property that needs infrastructure, or you're waiting to lease property with infrastructure, our common Guamanian dream of a home ownership can come true now. CLTC Resolution 2024-001 in Bill, is that the bill? 179? Will provide CLTC with the funding and the permanent operational savings that will help run infrastructure to the Chamor Land Trust properties. By repurposing the Guam International Country Club to an environmentally friendly solar farm, and moving CLTC and other government agency operations to the Guam International Country Club, CLTC will receive $9 million while saving the government of Guam expensive commercial rent every year, funding that will make it possible for the CLTC to access and afford low-interest infrastructure loans from the federal government. So this was sent out. Let's see. The Honorable Joe Senator Joe San Agustin, the Honorable Senator Roy Canata, the Honorable Senator Dwayne San Nicholas, the Honorable Senator Will Parkinson. I don't know. I should ask the sponsor of this bill, did he pay this out of his campaign funds, or was this paid for by the people of Guam? Really? Before we even deliberated this bill, we're already advertising to the land trust recipients that we're going to give you all of this, before it's even been deliberated on this floor. I guess the deals were already cut. So people of Guam, you think about that. Why are all these accommodations being made for this particular deadbeat company? That has allowed this particular golf course to literally go into the situation that it's in? And what are we doing? We're rewarding this company. At least, that's the intent here by the sponsors and supporters of this bill, is to reward this deadbeat company that has not consistently been paying their rental to the land trust recipients. And we're not only going to allow them to keep this property, we're going to extend the lease of this property. Is that what you do to companies that are not responsible? Is that what you do to companies that are not paying their fair share? Well, what that tells me is, all these years, in the fact that they've not been paying their rent, they've not been supporting the land trust recipients, but all of a sudden now, we're going to make a special deal. You know what this is to me, Madam Speaker? This is a sweet smell of corruption. That's what this is. My dear people of Guam, that is what is going on on the floor of this legislature. This is not, oh, we're going to help our eh de manaluhuts and maninahu ta'au ta'au Guam. We're going to help you, my people. We're going to get you infrastructure. This bill's going to make it happen, and we're going to do it for you. So yes, Madam Speaker, if it's a lie, because it's the simplest word, and it's only three letters, L-I-E. If we're going to lie about it, then let's at least make sure it's not in the bill, so that we're making sure that what we're putting there, and what we're expecting officially to be passed in this floor, is actually something truthful. I understand the intent of the sponsors to make it seem like everybody's jumping up and down and just loves this idea. All the golf courses support it, all the golfers, all the thousands of golfers out there support this, they love it. All the golf course owners love it too. Do they really? I don't think so. I think as more people become more and more aware of what's happening here, when they see what their leaders are doing on behalf of their assets, and how they're being short-changed, and how the members of this body that are sponsoring this bill, and those that desire to vote for it, want to reward a company that has not upheld its contractual agreement to the land trust and to the land trust recipients. This contract should have been canceled. This contract should have been bidded out. And if the new bidders came back and said, you know, we want to plant papaya, a coconut tree, whatever, and they're willing to pay more for it, then maybe then we have something to talk about, because it would have gone through a public review process. I don't live in Daddy Doe, Madam Speaker, and you know that, because we live down the street from each other, within walking distance. But I don't even know if the residents of Daddy Doe, because we say, oh, the municipal planning council, they're all good. They love this. Did the municipal planning council go and check to all those residents that live in that area and say, hey, by the way, do you want a solar farm in your neighborhood? I don't know that, do you? But do we really care about those people there in Daddy Doe? That would be living next to this solar farm? We're not giving them an opportunity, are we? Because unless you can show me, there's a whole bunch of meetings held, you know, and our publicly notice requirement was met, and that they were served a notice that, you know, like the land trust commission has to do when they want to rezone, they have to deliver to all landowners within 500 feet a written notice, and a notice of one hearings to be held, so that if they desire to come and testify at that hearing, they're notified, and they have the ability to do that. Did that happen? Probably not. So yes, Madam Speaker, if it's not a truthful statement, then by all means, we should remove it from the bill. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
You're welcome. Anybody else on the amendment? If not, Senator Perez, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. And what this paragraph really is very telling in itself, because it makes a sweetheart deal even sweeter. If you look at the original bill, which the resolution supported, it gave the option of leasing monthly or annually, whereas this substitute bill requires an upfront payment, advanced payment, so there's no opportunity for this long-term lease. You have to pay it all upfront, right, in stages, ten percent when the bill passes and then within a certain time, and then the rest when the power starts coming in. And so, just to give the public an idea of how much sweeter this thing is. So if you look at the current lease, which lasts up until 2039, the Chamor Land Trust is supposed to get $5 million. Okay, that's $5 million. And with the original bill before the substitute version, it's going to extend it to 2055, so they're going to add another 15 years, I believe, to it. And the amount that they're going to get for annual payments is 14.8 million, roughly, a little bit more than that. And that's including the 12% escalation every five years. So that's what the first bill did, and that's what the resolution supported, but then it was rescinded. So, I mean, that's another thing, it's inaccurate, obviously, that's why I rise in support. The other thing, too, is that, so now this bill, the substitute bill, which was not voted on, but which the author expects it to be passed, because that's the other thing, the assumption it's going to be passed and therefore we put it ahead of time, that, to me, is wrong. You know, it's not the legislature finds, the legislature hopes, I mean, maybe that could be the amendment to this, the legislature hopes that this, you know, it passes, but if it doesn't pass, you know, that's another thing. So I feel that we need to be truthful about our illes la torre en Guahan finds. But, so again, going back to the original bill versus the substitute bill, which is going to require an advance payment of seven to nine million dollars, so think about that. If the company just continues the lease as is, they're supposed to pay five million for that total sum of 15 years, and now they're going to get the rest of this 15-year lease for only $2 million? And that, you know, we know power costs money, we're paying it every month, so we're basically giving away, giving this land away, $2 million for 15 years. They got a better deal, it got even sweeter, versus the 14 million, which I don't believe is still a sweet, I still believe it's a sweetheart deal, because it doesn't factor the amounts of money, you know, the amount of payments, the energy, the cost of energy. And that energy cost is going to rise, too, potentially, right? So we don't know how these power purchase agreements are. There's a lot of fine detail, you know, as we know from experience from the residential solar panel residents, residents that have solar panels, they were stuck with a power purchase agreement where it ballooned at the end of a life, the life of that power purchase agreement. So again, five million for this current lease for just the remaining period of, until 2039, which is a 15-year period, and then for the next 15 years, it's going to reduce to two million. So the sweetheart deal got even sweeter. And that's what this particular intent is, that's what it's really saying, let's make this sweetheart deal sweeter. And let's... Yeah, basically, you know, we're not getting the best, yeah, it's really an insult. It's an insult to our intelligence, it's an insult to the Chamor Land Trust, who, by the way, their mission is to return lands, not to give out sweetheart deals. And if we talk about we want to put infrastructure in, we know how money just flows, that is not enough to pay for the sewage, the water, the utility infrastructure, that is not enough. We think that seven million is going to pay for it, it isn't. And to think that you can be getting more money because of the power production, you can make millions a month. If you look at GPA, what are they getting for power? Hundreds of millions. And yet we're willing to give it away at $2 million for 15 years, and that is not enough to pay for the utilities? That's what this paragraph is saying, let's make the sweetheart deal sweeter and let's take away the opportunity for the Chamor Land Trust to become sustainable. So I rise in full support of this amendment.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Barnett, I will recognize you.
Si dos masi, Madam Speaker. Manana si dos to the people of Guam and my colleagues, Beba Betnis. I rise in support of the amendment and really just thank the speakers, we were looking at some of these amendments here that I'm assuming probably would have been put into the bill when it was in committee, but we yanked the bill out of committee, so here we are. But I did have a question for the author, because I do agree with the retiring speakers about...
Okay, state your question, please.
So, the language of the bill reads that the Chamor Land Trust has passed a unanimous resolution in favor of the amendment of the lease as accelerated rent, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So just, because I'm kind of confused, because someone said there was one, and that there was one, so just, if I could ask the author, is there a unanimous resolution from the Chamor Land Trust that supports this bill?
The author of the amendment is who he's asking.
Yes, since she's the land trust.
Yes, I'd go to that question. So I have testimony at the public hearing that was submitted May 14, 2024, from the Chamor Land Trust Commission, signed by John T. Birch, Acting Administrative Director, that says the Chamor Land Trust Commission will not be providing testimony on Bill 179-37. CLTC would like to withdraw Resolution Number 2024-001, submitted on March 2024, to Speaker Theresa Lahey, Oversight Chair of the Committee of Ninth Circuit.
Senator...
Thank you. Thank you. Si dos masi, Madam Speaker. Si dos masi, Madam Speaker. Yeah, it's got to be facts, so if it's not true, take it out of the bill, I don't understand the objection. This amendment doesn't affect any of the substance of the bill, and again, if there isn't a resolution from the Chamor Land Trust that says we're behind this, then just simply take it out of the bill and ask my colleagues to respect the truth and support the amendment. Si dos masi.
You're welcome. Buen pavez, Senator Barnett, on the amendment. Anyone else wishing to speak? I don't see anyone, hands up.
Yes, thank you. As was indicated earlier, so there is no resolution. They did discuss these things in their meetings, yes, and at a certain point, they were in favor of it, but then they revoked their resolution, they revoked their support, they said no testimony, they said it again, and they, at last I checked, even in June, were not submitting any new resolution, even up to now, no new resolution has been submitted. So that is the facts of this. There was also concerns brought up and questions brought up by commissioners that I believe have not yet been addressed, and that was one of the issues why the bill's still in committee. It's because we've given the commissioners time to address even their own questions as to the facts of this deal, as to really whether this is a good value for them. So I respect that. I think if they are questioning that finally, it's good, they should do that, and we should not cram something down their throats after all of this history. If they're going to deliberate more slowly on it, then by all means, I think we, as a body, should also respect that.
Are there any objections to this amendment? There is an objection, all those in favor?
A roll call, Madam Speaker.
There is a roll call on this amendment. Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, nay. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, nay.
Is there a motion to excuse? Senators not present. Senator, nay. Senator San Nicholas, I apologize. On the Theresa Lahey amendment, is it a yea or a nay? On the deletion, that's a nay, thank you. He said nay. I heard nay, I confirmed it, Senator Barnett. Clerk, please proceed.
Senator San Nicholas, nay. Senator Shelton.
On the motion to excuse, Senator?
Motion to excuse, Senators not present.
On that motion, is there an objection? Seeing none, motion carries. Clerk, please proceed.
Senator Shelton, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Lahey.
The amendment is proffered by Speaker Theresa Lahey on page two, lines 12 through 18. Receive six ayes, eight nays, motion fails. Speaker Lahey, you still have the floor.
Thank you. That was the easy amendment, just taking out the lie from the bill, the outright lie from this bill, but if my colleagues are willing to go forward, even misrepresenting the Chamor Land Trust, then I don't know how we are going to make this bill any better. This bill, there was no testimony from GWA, GPA, EPA, the AG said no, GDA said no, GVB said no. We've got accused of lobbyists in our legislature not being registered, who wrote this bill, still unresolved. The pro testimony, yes, came in from competitor golf, private golf courses. And this golf course, by its lease, is very much mandated to allow affordable rates for the residents of Guam and priority times for the residents of Guam. It's the only golf course on Guam that did that. So their competitors to come in and say, yeah, we agree, change that to a solar farm, I don't know how much more obvious we can be. The lease does not take care of insurance, it keeps it at the same insurance for a golf course as a solar farm. $100,000 bodily injury, 1989 rates.
I'd like to propose another amendment, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
It's on page two, again. This is the beginning of the meat of the bill. This is, instead of directing the Chamor Land Trust to make the following amendments to the lease agreement, that we, if they really are going to force this down their throats, that they authorize and approve that the Chamor Land Trust can make the following amendments, but we let them decide that, and we let them determine those. So I'm striking the words "and directs" and leaving it to read, legislature hereby "authorizes and approves the Chamor Land Trust to make the following amendments to the subject lease agreement."
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on this amendment? Are there any objections to this amendment? There is an objection, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. There is a call for the roll call. Sergeant of Arms, can we please get our colleagues in here? There is a vote on the floor, we need to have all the members here and present. Colleagues, on the amendment, on page two, line 23, there has been an objection, there has been a call, three calls for a roll call. Clerk, roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, nay. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, nay. Senator San Nicholas. Senator San Nicholas, nay. Senator Shelton.
On the motion, Senator San Augustine, to excuse, members not present.
Madam Speaker, motion to excuse, Senators not present.
On that motion, hearing, is there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Please proceed.
Senator Shelton, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui... Senator Tid agree, aye. Speaker Turlae. Speaker Turlae, aye.
The amendment on page two, line 23, receives six ayes, eight nays. Motion fails. Speaker Turlae, you still have the floor.
Yes. I guess it's clear that the legislature, we don't care so much to give the Chamor Land Trust a say in this. We don't care so much whether they can make the deal better. We don't care at all. We want this deal. It seems like now the Chamor, the majority of senators in the 37th Guam Legislature, they want to force this deal on the Chamor Land Trust. This bad deal on the Chamor Land Trust. And I really think that their motives should be examined by the voters of Guam. They're going to tell you inaccurate statements like they have, where they say, this is going to save you on power bills. No, this is not going to save you power bills. GPA is going to save us on power bills when they contract out for solar power, which we have mandated them to do. And they will do that with or without this property. This property gives us no additional advantage, no additional savings. It's a lie. And the Chamor Land Trust is not saving on rent with this deal maybe four years from now if they were able to generate solar power from this property. And after, they've lost out on fair market value on lease of the property, of the rest of the property. When they own this property and this building and could easily use it if they wanted to because the lessor, lessie is in default. Unpaid rent for over a year now. Arrears in rent. A year ago, the arrears were $900,000. I make a motion to move this bill back to the committee so that the Chamor Land Trust can finish its deliberations on this deal before the legislature slams it down their throat, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to move this bill back to committee. There is an objection. All those in favor signify by?
Roll call, roll call.
Okay. Did I hear, roll call? Raise your hand if you want a roll call so I can see. Okay. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Senator Barnett.
A motion to send the bill back to committee.
Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Caneta. Senator Caneta, nay. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, nay. Senator Sinickless. Senator Sinickless, nay. Senator Shelton.
Senator Sinagustin.
Madam Speaker, motion to excuse Senators not present?
On that motion, hearing no objection, motion carries. Please proceed.
Senator Shelton, excused. Senator Tid agree. Senator Tid agree, aye. Speaker Turlae. Speaker Turlae, aye.
On the motion to refer back this Bill 179-37 COR to committee, it receives six ayes and eight nays. Motion fails. Speaker Turlae, you still have the floor. You have a couple of minutes.
Sutus Masi, I'd like to proffer another amendment. Again, these are intended to make this deal a semblance closer to some kind of real deal, real value for the people of Guam, particularly the beneficiaries of the trust. This is to page three, lines two to five. According to the bill, the lease term will be extended to 2055. And I'm putting in here a preface to subsection two that already exists in subsection three and other subsections, and that is, in the event the property is used for generation, stores, and transmission of renewable solar power. Otherwise, I see no reason why this should be extended. And it says the lease, I'm making an amendment to change the word "shall" to "may" be extended. And instead of "shall," provide an option to extend by an additional two years to "may." Again, this puts the negotiations, it puts the actual lease terms back where they belong at the Chamor Land Trust Commission and lets them determine whether they're going to do this or not, based on the facts that are in front of them that we do not have in front of us. And that's very important, particularly now when we are making all these decisions without even the letters in front of you. So that's my amendment, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Turlae. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Brown, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment because I have to tell you, you know, it sounds like this bill is signed, sealed, and delivered. I wonder, I got to find out the faces of the owners of this, has this lease agreement because we are now directing once again, mandating from the floor of this legislature what the actions are to be by the Chamor Land Trust Commission. You know, this is another guise. We create the commission, we say, this is your mandate, this is what you're supposed to do in the interest of the people that are recipients of the land trust. And yet, just like what happened in the Budget Act, remember that a month ago when we were cheering and clapping ourselves here on the floor of this legislature? Remember? Do we remember that, people of Guam? We were like penguins. Cheering, that Budget Act. Boy, we were so happy because, my goodness, all the motocross people were up here cheering us on, right? I don't see us clapping yesterday at the public hearing when all those people stood up for cancer care. They were almost 99.9% of the audience. I guess we forgot about them. And here we are now doing the same thing again. We're going to mandate to the commission that they shall, they must. They can't think for themselves because we're demanding that they do it. We're going to impose the will that the people have given us, the temporary power, Madam Speaker. Let me remind all our colleagues here, I don't know why, maybe it's not worth it, maybe I'm wasting my time because I already see how the votes are aligned. We are allowing the wrong thing to happen. Why? Who are these people? Who owns this lease agreement? Are they more important than the Chamor people out there that are supposed to be the recipients of this land and these assets? And those that were allowed by the 1950 Organic Act? For what, a couple million dollars more, really? We're going to sell them out? But we want to tell them that we're going to get you infrastructure. You know, all that infrastructure we haven't had in 30 years, we're going to be the ones to get it to you. Really? A measly $2 million? Do you know how much sewer line a $2 million is going to buy? How much water line $2 million is going to buy? Almost absolutely nothing compared to the demand and need that's out there. And that's what we're selling them. Those who have stood in line, those who are still waiting, those who since 1995 have nothing. You know, I've seen dirty deals. This is right up there. This is right up there. And yes, stick your faces in your phone. Take a good look, people of Guam. Because this is another deal again that's not intended to benefit the recipients. But we want to tell them, we want to tell, mandate the commission what they shall do, that they shall extend this lease agreement. Why are we doing that? Who are we signing, sealing, and delivering this deal for? What company is so benefiting from this? What are they giving in exchange for all of this? I mean, I don't mind the deliberation and debate, and we take different positions on issues, but this in particular, wow. This smells to high heaven. And how dare you? You're going to go out and tell the people how you're there for them? How they should put you back in here and give you their power to make decisions on their behalf while you guys are cutting deals? Because what's the logic here? You're doing it for their benefit? $2 million, Madam Speaker? I can't even pave a mile of asphalt. And we're going to extend this lease another 30 years. How many of us are going to be here in 10 years? Five. Except for a few that, you know, are under 40. The rest of us are in our late 50s and 60s, and some of us are closer to 70. But we're willing to do that here. Majority of the members of this body are willing to do that, people of Guam. And yet, you wonder why? You stood in line all those years ago and you probably haven't received your lease, or if you received your lease, you probably have issues with it, or you probably can't get, this is the reason. Because somebody else is benefiting from what should be yours. Somebody else is putting the money in their pocket when it should have been going out to help you get your infrastructure so that you could either build your home or, say, if you wanted to go out and plant and farm. You could and should have been able to do that. But here we are 30-plus years later, and you're once again being sold a bill of goods that, oh, the passage of this bill is going to make that possible. Really? Even $9 million, Madam Speaker, is nothing. But we're willing to sell our people out for $9 million. Let's go pray on Sunday. Let's sell out for a few pieces of silver. And yet, we'll go up there and smile to our people and say, we're there for you. And yet, when we have the opportunity, what are we doing? We don't want to be factual in the statements of this bill. We want to force the land trust to cut this deal. We want to force them to deliver this lease agreement. And we're literally making them do it for nothing. And the Land Trust Commission, what, they're going to get an office? My goodness, Madam Speaker, there's many other ways they could finance to get an office if they're spending $900,000 a year. They have the land. They could very easily finance to build their office and build an office that's designed for their use and the use of the recipients that would be there as their customers. But we're going to sell out for that clubhouse? Do the neighbors there in this area of Deaddy Don't know that this is what's going to happen in their neighborhood? Is that what they want in their neighborhood? Do they have a say? Probably not. But we're going to mandate that they must do this. They must, we're going to mandate this. How can you even hold your head up and think, oh, we're there to support the land trust? No, we pretend to support the land trust till we get deals cut. You know, this is a very thing that disgusts me, Madam Speaker. It's a very reason, after all these years, I've come back into the hall of this legislature because of this kind of nonsense going on. I think our people can handle the truth, good or bad, as long as we're being honest with them. But we're not being honest with them. We're selling them short, and we're taking their land, and we're giving it to someone else for nothing, for pennies. While they don't have the land. Or even if they have the land, they can't build on it or develop on it to a decent status of a decent living for their families. What a shame. No wonder why the public out there is so disgusted. No wonder why, Madam Speaker, they don't even want to vote. Because they're tired. They probably look at all of us, and it doesn't matter who gets elected anymore, so what changes for me? Is my life better? Is my family's life better? While government officials are stealing from the table or stealing for others at a time, Madam Speaker, when corruption in this government, it's not down here. It's not just down here. It's not even halfway up. Gehilo, it's all the way up. Oh, my goodness, I can't even reach the ceiling here. That's how high it is these days in our government. And now, here in the House of the People, where we're supposed to deliberate and show the people of Guam, you know, hold our feet to the fire and our mouths to the words that we say, that we're really making decisions in their best interests that's going to improve their lives. I don't see how taking a valuable asset, not even to talk about the reason why the municipal golf course was built in the first place. This was such a project that I know our former governor, Governor Ada, supported back in his day when he was governor, when I came back to Guam. So that junior golfers, so that young people, so that members of our community could go and golf, and they could afford it at rates that they could afford. But we're saying, oh, all these other golf clubs on Guam are going to allow everybody to come in there and play. Is that guaranteed in a contract? Are the prices at a lower level that's guaranteed to them? Or do we not care? Because I, Madam Speaker, we talk about our children, the future of our island, the bright shining star of what's ahead of us. But now, when the time comes to really make a decision that can support and help them, give them something positive to do that will lead them on a good path to their future, we're going to take that away, and we're going to put a solar farm. So that the owners of this lease, the delinquent owners of this lease, can make even more money on the backs of the Chamor people and those that are entitled and are eligible to the land trust. And including those in our community that would like to have affordable rates so that they can go out and play golf. And those young people in junior golf can go, and they have a course to practice on. But I'm be, we're there at the sports games, hey, we're there for you, kids. We love you, children. Oh, we just light up when they come into the session hall. But when the time comes to really support them, where the rubber meets the road, no, we're going to take away that opportunity, and we're going to put a solar farm on there, little boys and girls. That's our future for you. And that's what we're doing, Madam Speaker, when we're not even leaving the opportunity for the Land Trust Commission. for the land trust commission, in all their perfection and imperfection, to make those decisions. We're once again directing them. Aye, we get so high on our power. You know, the people gave us the power, and, boy, we want to not just use it, but we are allowing ourselves to abuse it. This is pretty ballsy. We're a month ahead of an election, and except for one member of this body, I think everybody else in here is running again for reelection. You're either very bright or very dumb. I don't know that there's anything in between when we take actions like this. How disappointing. Because you know, the irony is the players behind this, that are behind all this, they're not even in this room. That are pulling strings here. They're not even here for the people to see who they are and what they're making members of this body do. But that's, you know, people of Guam, take a good look. Six eight today because one's missing, six nine probably when the votes go down on this bill. Take a good look at who's voting for what here. Because I can almost guarantee you, if I'm around three years, five years from now, Madam Speaker, there's still going to be hundreds, if not thousands, of land trust recipients either still haven't gotten their lot, or if they got their lot, they still don't have the infrastructure. Because members of this legislature are willing to sell out for pennies. Tying up this property, their property, for pennies. But yet we want to advertise our honorable titles in telling them that we are going to get you the infrastructure. Yeah, boy, the backhoe's going to be right out there tomorrow. Lie upon lie upon lie that we are perpetrating to our people today. How disappointing. You don't have strike one. This is strike two. I don't know what strike three is, just within a month. How dare you, any of you go out and talk to the land trust people that you're there to support them when you do things like this? Maybe if you were going to put a bunch of houses on the golf course, maybe, hey, you had a better argument. But no, you're going to give this to a deadbeat company. Yes, I know I'm running out of time, but I'll speak on the next amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Hoping we can talk on the amendment, on the amendment. Anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Roy? Senator Roy, Senator Dwayne, and Senator Tydegli on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I applaud the comments from the previous speakers, man. Very good. But I would just like to call on the previous question on the amendments and debates entirely. This is only good if we have eight votes, and I'm very hopeful that my colleagues support me on this intent. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Objection.
Again, we want to cut the bait on the bill. We want to pull it out of the committee so we can't get any of the testimony, you can't see any of the real evidence, and now we're going to cut debate on the bill because we can't hear the truth?
Madam Speaker, allow me to speak, Madam Speaker. Dequorum, please. There has been a motion to take back. That motion is out of order. We're still on an amendment right now. I will entertain that amendment or motion when we complete this. On the amendment. Anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Blash, you have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Madam Speaker, sorry, ma'am, I I rise in support of this amendment. It's like I rose in support of the previous amendments. But, you know, more so this one too. Because if you look at the language that is proffered in this amendment, this doesn't say you won't do it. As a matter of fact, this respects the authority and the power of the Tramoral Land Trust Commission to be able to make decisions. The authority and the power that was granted by this body. By individuals who were converted by this body. To be able to make those decisions in behalf of the people. Because if we were to leave the language as it was, that shall, then why have a Tramoral Land Trust Commission? Why? So we can pass the buck on to them? And say, "Oh, it was them. They did it"? There is no harm in this language. In the event the property is used for generation, storage, and transmission of renewable solar power, the lease term may be extended. It doesn't say it won't be. It doesn't say don't consider it. It says, "Tramoral Land Trust, you are going to be the individuals who are going to be negotiating this lease. Do it in the best interest of the people of Guam." We don't trust them? What are we saying? And trust me, I'm speaking just to this amendment. When it comes to the body of the bill, then I'll speak again. But there's no harm in this. What's the fear? Convince me that there's harm or there's fear, or that there should be something we should be afraid of by allowing the Tramoral Land Trust Commission to be able to perform its duties? Convince me. And maybe I would draw my support for the amendment. But right now, it's just saying, "We trust you." There's no fear in that. There shouldn't be. Unless you don't trust them. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blash. Senator Barnett on the amendment, as proffered by Speaker Terlai.
Si dos masia, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of the amendment. And it's actually one of the substantive changes when you compare the bill as it was introduced, as it was torn out of the committee versus the subbill that we got on the floor. The original bill, and that's all this amendment really does, is revert the language in the substitute bill pretty much back to what was in the bill as introduced. Which originally read that the lease term may be extended through January 31st, 2055, and the Tramoral Land Trust may provide an option. So in the substitute bill, they switched "may" to "shall," and that's one of the first lessons I learned as a senator, freshman senator of the 37 Guam Legislature, is the difference between "may" and "shall." "May" is like, obviously, you "may." "Shall" means you're going to do that. And so I don't, not comfortable with mandating the land trust to do that, simply because the current lease expires in 2039, which I think would provide a reasonable opportunity for the Tramoral Land Trust to look at the kind of deal that they're in, and then renegotiate for a better value for the people of Guam. And I don't think that's outrageous. I don't think it's nonsense. I think it's actually prudent. Because the bill currently as written, should it pass, again, will force the Tramoral Land Trust to extend this lease all the way till 2055. And I did the math, Senator Brown. I was thinking about it last night. I will be 81 years old, hopefully, God willing. Yeah, I'll be... I'll be 81 years old in 2055. So again, none of these amendments, that's what I kind of wanted to say up here, none of these amendments that Speaker is proffering kill the bill. They don't kill it at all. They make it better, and in many ways, they revert some of the language back to the way it was written when it was originally introduced. So I don't understand the objection. And I also don't understand the motion to call the question. You know, again, this has happened a few times in this term.
Senator Barnett, let's call it the question. It's not on this amendment right now.
I know, but they tried to, so...
I know. That's why I'm giving you the opportunity.
No, no. So anyway, yeah, I mean, we're elected to debate and discuss these measures. So for me, you know, calling the question and killing the debate, especially when the kind of debate that's happening, it's, I think it's reasonable. It's reasonable. These amendments are very reasonable. They give the Tramoral Land Trust the ability to look at where they're at in 2039, and we don't force them to do anything. So I rise in support of the amendment, and I ask my colleagues, pretty, pretty please, put faboit to support it as well. Si dos masia.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Anyone else on the amendment, as proffered by Speaker Terlai? That is what we are entertaining. Senator Tydegli and Senator Senniklis. Please speak on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. I think many of us who has great concerns over this legislation would be a lot more at ease and more commendable to this bill if there were safety mechanisms in this bill which we are trying to put amendments in here. Right now, we don't even have an appraisal, my colleagues, not even appraisal, to determine the value of this property, the true value. We are shortchanging again the people of Guam. What if the Tramoral Land Trust goes, gets together, decides to put a, decides to have an appraisal done, realizes the value of it, that they can help more of our Tramoral Land Trust recipients by giving them the money they deserve, money that this property is valued at, to assist them? That's why "may" is put in here, my colleagues, "may," not "shall." You know, we're just... It just looks like the same, same actors. This amendment is doing the same thing that we've tried to do on other legislations, other legislations. Accountability. Being fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money. Instead, it's the same actors passing legislation like fireworks without any safety mechanisms. Passing legislation that would harm our aquifer.
Senator Tydegli, on the amendment, please.
I am. I am talking about an amendment that can do the same kind of damage. I'm giving an example, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
I'm giving an example, Madam Speaker.
But please watch.
I am. I am, Madam Speaker. I'm only standing up here telling the truth. That's all, Madam Speaker. I'm telling the truth, giving an example of what we've been trying to do in this whole two years as senators, going after legislation that is going to hurt the people of Guam. There are people in here fighting for the rights of our people, making sure that every tax dollar that they pay out to the government of Guam is spent correctly, putting in safety measures. Again, the same actors are voting on legislation that would not help the people of Guam. The same ones, fireworks, hurting our aquifer, damaging that, asking, calling for the question on legislation that can't even be debated on this floor. People of Guam, when they vote on this measure, you will see, once again, who those bad actors are. All we're trying to do in these amendments is to make sure it's done fairly because, obviously, the fairest thing to do is to cancel the contract and put this property out for bid again. That's the fair thing to do. But we're not. We're not doing it that way. I don't think anybody, we would be here at all, like one of my colleagues said. We wouldn't be here doing any of this if we allowed the Tramoral Land Trust the ability to do what's right. And that is seek an appraisal, see what's the best value for this property, and put it out to bid. That's fair. That's very fair. Excuse me. So I asked my colleagues, "Please support this important amendment." Taking away "may" and "shall" and giving the ability for the Tramoral Land Trust to get the best bang for their buck. And again, those who are listening, you will see the same bad actors voting no on this amendment. Si dos masia, Madam Speaker.
Gwen Pobetsu, anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Senniklis, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, when Ronald Reagan was running for reelection, there was a heckler in the crowd, and he was trying, and he was tired, and he was tired of it. There was a heckler. Ronald Reagan, everybody would, everybody remembered this, when he turned to the crowd and he he told the heckler to, "Oh, just shut up. Shut up." He had enough. I really dislike that we attack people each other in here. And you know, Senator Fisher, you know, he's a really wonderful gentleman. He says, "You know, we shouldn't be attacking each other here. It's just not right." The people of Guam want us to to get along. And I'm speaking on the, on this amendment. I, you know, as a businessman, you know, it takes a lot of man-hours to do things, a lot of man-hours, a lot of money goes into investing. And so these people here have a lease, right? They have a lease. To protect the integrity of the intents and the leases and to prevent any more further working of man-hours and spending money this way or that way. You know, we put, we put things in here to protect the integrity of the lease. And that's why I stand against this amendment. Why? Because all the man-hours and all the other things that go on to making something work, you know, you don't want to just willy-nilly allow or put something in there to prevent, you know, to disparage the good work. And so that's why I stand against the amendment. I was just reading the news this morning, and they said we're half, less than half of the arrivals of tourism. You know, I remember as a customs officer, you know, the carousels would be full of golf bags. And that hasn't happened in four-something years. And so here we have a, here we have another lease, you know, we have this lease, and you know, my thing is always, you know, I try to look for the truth, right? Look for the truth and try to do the right thing. And so we have a lease, we have a company here, you know, has gone through these, this organization has gone through hard times, just like a lot of us. And so we're here to renegotiate the lease, maybe, right here. We're here to make things better. You got a, you got a, you got a leaseholder who has a, has a property, has fell under hard times, and we're here to, to try to find a solution for both them, because, you know, we're, we're, we want to support these guys who took the time... guys who took the time out to develop this property. And at the same time, we want to recognize that they fell on hard times. And we want to also recognize that there's a solution, there's something right now on the table, on the table. Look at for what it is today. We have something today. I just got a, I like to make my own decisions, you know? And I've been searching, searching, searching. Well, I got permission from Troy Torres. He goes, you know, he sent me a quote, it says, "Those guys that are calling you corrupt because you're supporting this or one way or another," you know, it's just the gall, the gall of them to do that. Because I learned here, working here in the legislature, is because if you look at transparency, everybody's saying transparency, you look at the bill, there's nothing to hide there. It's all there. It's all there for you to read. You know, there's no, and I mentioned this before, the special interest is the one you don't see. That's the sweetheart deal. The special interest is the one you don't see. GICC is here before us, you see them. They're here for their interests, they're here to renegotiate and give us a better deal, and that's what we're here today to do. We're here to do that. And, you know, I've spoke to a lot of people out there, and they're just sick and tired of this nastiness that goes on in here. And they want us to work together, you know? So you get to decide who gets to work together for your best interest come November and out, accept it willingly, either way. I am here for the people, we're all here for the people. I believe that this amendment is, goes against, you know, I guess, best practices, you know, when we need to support our businesses and those people that are willing to come forward to invest in our government. You know, the Chinese, you know, they help out their businesses, and they slaughter us, they slaughter American businesses. Why? Because the government supports their business, and they slaughter us. And America needs to wake up, we all need to wake up, and support our businesses. Because our economics depends on it, our future depends on it, the peace of the world depends on it. Here's a measure that we're going to support businesses and those who come forward to invest in our island, and that's what we're here to do. And we try to get the best deal for our people, and I believe that this bill and these amendments that are being, this amendment that are being proffered only stymies progress. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, I will allow the speaker to close. As a matter of fact, I'm going to call for a moment's recess. Imena Trenta Shetina Leslaturen Guam is back from recess. Colleagues, I want to say, as the presiding on the podium right now, there was a motion that was made by a colleague to call for the previous question. I did not have the standing rules or the Masons rules in front of me. I, as the presider, had allowed the amendment to continue. And now that we're at this, as soon as I got word and looked at the Masons and the standing rules, I will rule that the motion for the previous questions, based on our standing rules and Masons, is in order, takes precedence, and we call for the previous question and allow the author of the bill to close. If there is an objection, I will call for the vote.
Point of order.
You can state your point of order, Speaker. You may proceed.
Thank you. I think I can. So the first point of order is that you already ruled on the motion for the previous question. You said it was out of order. That was your ruling, and we proceeded.
Speaker, I'm not going to allow you to do that. You are out of order. You are out of order.
You ruled that motion out of order. We should proceed. He can make the motion again if he wants, but that motion was ruled out of order.
Colleagues, a motion was made. I am ruling on that, based on the decision. There is a motion that is ruled out of order to overrule the presider. On that motion to overrule the presider.
Please do not make up motions. Point of order. What are you doing?
For the call of the question.
Do not make up.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
Do not make things up.
Hold on. Hold on.
You want to act on a motion that was made by several speakers ago that you already ruled on, and you've already ruled on that. And no one has moved to overrule you.
Madam Speaker, I allowed you because I did not have the rules in front of me. I have confirmed. Legal has given me the standing rules. The Masons is in front of me. I am asking, there is a call for the previous questions. Are there any objections?
Object, no. Point of order. Point of order.
I will acknowledge your point of order.
Point of order.
Yes, I will acknowledge your point of order.
There is no current call for the previous question because that was made and ruled out of order. That's one. My second point of order, if you will hear me, is that even if you want to go back to previous speakers and recognize a motion that you ruled out of order already.
Speaker Jerez, I will not allow that. I'm telling you.
That the motion was for the previous question, and the previous question before us, if you will hear me, you will hear the point of order. And I will cite the rule, as our rules mandate that we do. Cite the rule, the rule. On the previous question, if you are going to go back to previous speakers, recognize a motion that you ruled out of order, then follow the rules on that. And it says that the amendment shall.
Speaker, I've already ruled that that was out of.
The author of the amendment.
In consultation with legal.
Am I going to be heard or not?
Again, in consultation with legal.
You cannot make a determination on a point of order if you can't hear.
I want to bring up a point of order.
I have the floor on a point of order.
Senator Sinocelli, I will recognize you on a point of order.
I have the floor on a point of order.
I've already over.
You haven't even heard my point of order.
I have already stated that her statements are out of order.
I have two points of order, Madam Speaker, two. Madam Vice Speaker, I have two points of order. One was the one that you're just ignoring and you're not addressing.
I am not ignoring, Madam Speaker.
The second one is that even if you are going to go back and recognize a motion for the previous question that you ruled out of order now, then the previous question is the amendment. And I get to close on my amendment. It's my amendment. That's what the rules say.
No, it does not.
Except that the author of the amendment shall have the right to close, and the question under the discussion shall thereupon be immediately put to vote. And if he wants to make another motion to cut off debate on the entire bill after my amendment, he's totally free to do that, but do it by the rules. Just because we don't want to hear people speak doesn't mean we have to break every single rule that we have.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
That's my point of order, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Newly noted. Senator Sinocelli, you're recognized on a point of order.
You know, Madam Speaker, point of order is number one. When the question was called for the previous questions, you gave the opportunity for everyone to speak on the amendment.
Point of order.
There was no.
Madam Speaker.
Everything is do as I say, but not do as I do. Come on, let's stay with the program. The issue was, there was a call for the previous question. The presiding officer said, "I'll give everybody a chance to speak." Why don't you allow everybody to speak?
Yeah, let's allow everybody to speak, exactly.
No, enough, enough. Let's move to the previous question.
Senator, I made a decision. I'm calling.
You ruled it out of order. That was your initial decision.
That based, the motion for a previous question after consulting with legal counsel was that the call for the previous question takes precedence. If you wish to overrule the presider, please state by raising your hand. If you, thank you. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. On the call for the previous question, is there an objection?
On the call for.
On the call for the previous question is not debated.
Objection.
There is an objection. All those in favor for the call of the previous question, please signify by raising your hand. Two, three, four, five.
Roll call. No, it's not too late. She didn't declare a vote. Please. Do we have to discard every rule in order to conduct?
There is three roll calls. There will be a roll call on this call for the previous question. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
What is the question?
The call for the previous question.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
We already voted on the, to overrule the presider.
Just a point of information. You ruled that motion out of order, and it wasn't until Senator Fisher approached the die and gave you the Masons that you now are trying to do some underhanded tactics here, because you guys don't want to hear the truth.
Senator Barnett, you are out of order. I asked.
Point of order. Sorry, ma'am. I'd call the House's attention to a breach of order. We are not allowed to impugn one another's motives.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Point of order.
Hold on.
Point of information, that wasn't an impugnment, that was just stating the facts of what occurred.
We are out of order. Mr. Clerk, a vote, call for the roll call for the previous question. All those in favor of the previous, to call for the previous question, signify by your vote. Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Senator Blas, Senator Blas, nay. Senator Brown, Senator Brown, nay. Senator Duñez, Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher, Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Lujan, Senator Lujan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson, Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez, Senator Perez, nay. Senator Canata, Senator Canata, aye. Senator Sinocelli, Senator Sinocelli, aye. Senator Siniklis, Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton.
On the motion.
Motion to excuse Senators not present.
Hearing, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Senator Shelton excused. Senator Titegwe. Senator Tid agree. Senator Tid agree. Senator Tid agree, nay. Senator Tid agree, nay. Speaker Tulahe. Speaker Tulahe.
To cut off debate, no. To cut off debate, no.
Speaker Tulahe, nay. Speaker Tulahe, nay.
On the motion to call for the previous question, there are eight ayes and six nays. On the motion to call for the previous question, there are eight ayes and six nays. Motion carries. Motion carries. Moment's recess. Moment's recess. Thirty-seventh Guam Legislature is back to, called back to order. Thirty-seventh Guam Legislature is back to, called back to order. Senator San Augustine, on the motion. Senator San Augustine, on the motion.
A point of order. A point of order.
You didn't say a point of order. You didn't say a point of order.
I'm saying it right now. I'm saying it right now.
Okay, point of order. Okay, point of order. Point of order, Speaker Tulahe, you're recognized. Point of order, Speaker Tulahe, you're recognized.
This is the same one that I raised before, that if you, if you, if the motion passed for the previous question, This is the same one that I raised before, that if you, if you, if the motion passed for the previous question, then I am allowed, as the author of the amendment, to close. then I am allowed, as the author of the amendment, to close. The rules on page fourteen, subsection E, subsection two. The rules on page fourteen, subsection E, subsection two. And I ask that the presiding officer follow these rules. And I ask that the presiding officer follow these rules.